So, thank you. Due to the current local, state, and federal emergency declarations and guidance regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Minneapolis Board of Education is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, with the majority of members participating remotely via electronic means. This meeting is being livestreamed on our website and on Channel 15, and a recording will be available in both places. Before we begin, I'll note some legal and process expectations for both the board and the public listening. First, as required by law, we will take every vote by vote. I will ask the clerk to follow the role by district order, followed by large members. Board members, please mute yourselves when not talking, avoid background noise. During discussions, directors on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be recognized. Directors here in the room, please let me know. And finally, for the benefit of all of us, but in particular for our interpreters and those using closed captions, please remember to speak clearly, slowly, come into your microphone. Clerk Polly, will you please call the role? Director Anderson, yeah, no?
Director Alamin.
Director Alamin. No.
Director Ali.
Director Ali, no.
Director Suriel.
Director Suriel, no.
Director Ernst, Dr. Jordan Cunningham. Director Caprini. Director Anderson, two of them.
Keho lin da, da chay yo, chu tau tia ko wa li scua lu fae chapla la mo to cha tu sa kandau, ko pa to to la ka ke pain su. Hi, nhon gurum be huwa Allison Moore, ku ya itu niat si chedau, otum niat chedau, nhadon da hell community school. Ku pa huwa tiya uli ke kandau kandau, ni shen chen bo li cha tou cho da. Tia cho lo inkam la ya cha tu sa kandau, zangai za ta nhadon ho. Nhadon da hell ku cha tu sa kandau la tou ka dau ya caring compassionate, tou ke kandau kandau la mo pa to ho community. Ku pa tiya ni chi ya iko universal experience to ho MPS, pe yo chu talasha tiya vilika page and guarantee. Ya lo inkam la ya students of colors la yo chi tau zai za ke kandau kandau, pain su iya li MPS yo chu mo. Pe yo tau nu hai tiya uli necha structure la ya hai tiya, ah ka cha ne ku yo tau zata mo to cha wealthy la ya white school. Ku tha hai tou ho cha bo scu bo la ya hai tiya lo inkam students. Ha ka la ma pa nhadon ho cha kana ka chi sa mo ika. Ocho.
Hi, um, my name is Farhia.
Gurum be huwa Farhia, du mu aplaud to mi niat ka da. Nhadon mi niat pu high school, me ro tiya mne school ku ka ka me nu ku sa to cha bo. Ah ne yo uli cha tou chu cha me uh maintaining cha ne ku zangai za ta tia. Uh lu ha pi huwa ne ha yel mo tiya cha, ah ka pe ti li cha tu sa kandau, ti li ba la to king huwa rong li lau, cha ne ku huwa rong li lau, huwa ka pa to to la sha, so so tia academically, ocho.
Hello, my name is Colette McKiver. I am the current MPS parent of a seventh, fifth grader in kindergarten at Lake Harriet Community School. Our three children have benefited from our whiteness as well as their wealth, and twelve students at Burrows and currently at Lake Harriet. Due to their economic status, our children have gained unfair access to most experience, and in most cases, the most effective teachers in the district. Our children have not benefited from having a teacher of color over the past seven years, nor have their white teachers been evaluated by student outcomes. Additionally, as you are aware, over the past three weeks, current former students who carry out publicly share their experience with them, in the classes of a member of the current teaching staff. This is acceptable in 2021. In MPS, we have a system of teacher placement that is driven by teacher choice, and we have a system of historically racist trends and patterns that are moving towards whiteness in the world. According to the every student's success track, the world's best workforce legislation, the MPS school board has held on ability to ensure school board's more, ha ke la pisao la ka ja mi niu. Ya le la ta hai nega chi cha dau ha ke chinga chinga la ta la mo dau cha ja ne ku chi mo. Ah ka bexa la mo ka ta rong liu chu dau dau, ya chu tau fan da ja ne ku lau. Mu cho pui do fan bo lau. Tau ha ke la mo ka ta se ha mo eh uh ye da ye, dau na go ja ne ku ye da na safa sa, ah la mo chun la la mo dau cha. Ka ne ka bi ya chi yo chi tau ni ru chiang opa na go hi. Ka na ku dau dau niat ru da ka Lake Harriet sa ka so ekorit chi. Bi ga ne, bi chi ne ga cha ya tu cha me ga na ta la mo ku dau ka li su ri tu ko lu xiong ya ta. De, vili da gu tiya sa ha ka pe la mo che ka chat, ke la mo o ka tou ka chi sa mo ke, ah chinga chinga la mo cha ja mi niu na hean, ya le la hai ne. Ocho, ru ne lu xiha. Good afternoon, my name is Dana Mark.
黑到人差，他么好给了吗？
Good evening Chair Ellison, Superintendent Graff, Director of the Board.
你这种程度，钱，superintendent Graff，直接到的board，
My name is Chairman Avon and I am a resident of the Bangkok neighborhood.
格鲁贝亚， Kena, Avon， 格里耶， 都那，你这个bank， 格鲁贝亚， 姑呀，一靠，你这个，
I feel like I've said this before, but I think it's worth saying again.
Event and coalition.
Leadership matters.
Ev- event and equity coalition， 天， 去走，保丽路，小大了，那头， 这，都的， 没得不离，那诶，么可能拆倒木， 被你去到了，么拆， 发， 学做， 好了，么， 给，还车叫恁， 落怒，他叫恁， 当当， 被去到了，么钱个到，再给了，叫叫恁， 黑，了么，真的叫奶哭诶，了， 不，包黑的，呃，到黑的，到了， 了， 个要害，个内， 了么，叫了嘛， 钱个，么给钱钱呢，叫叫拉美北省， 了么，我这里叫policy， practices in country， 老跟钱个到， 给， 了， 把车到， 多， 叫奶嘿，痛快的，你这个， 我这都，你这个，
I want to thank those who took the time to call in and share their perspectives with us. Next, I want to turn it over to Superintendent Graff to provide opening comments for tonight's meeting.
Thank you again Chair Ellison, um, I do have a lengthy update to report to share with the board and help, but, um, but I want to begin by just acknowledging that this is our last part of education meeting for the school year.
可能被好波儿啊，就开始， 米的， 然后， 个， 叫路修呢， 好， 绕个， 塔子啦， 罗， 好， 小呢， 呃， the end of twenty twenty one school year, so, small feat. 好给个， 那， 底下， 小啊， 怕那个， 你只有诶， 好， 美了呢， 他个， 莫， 好， 给个， 用了， 么， 钱， 这， 啊， 好， 诶， 被个， 那， 底下， 这次， 里， 好， 当， 他叫， 关注一下， 叫， high school呢， 我， 就， 当， 他叫， 对， 他叫， 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 那么， 公， 对， 到， 这， 都， 这， 叫， 关注一下， 呢， 那么， 这， 出错， 好呢， 因为， 从， 先， 个， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 了， 么， 啥， 学， 个， 了， 么， 啥， 学， 宝， 他， 他， 给， 把， 学， 给， 借， 学， 了， 么， 啥， 给， 借， 学， 了， 么， 啥， 给， 借， 学， 了， 么， 啥， 给， 了， 钱呢， 你也是， 能， 到呀， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 了， 能， 能， 到， 能， 别， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 够， 着呢， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 了， 么， 啥， 给， 了， 么， 啥， 给， 了， 么， 看到， 他叫恁， 自己， 诶， 我， 别， 了， 么， 超， 着， 了， 小呢， 别， 了， 么， 要， 超， 好给， 嘎， 摸， 摸， 通， 电， 对呢， 了， 么， 我， 超， 着， 他， 就是， 坏， 到， 超多， 他， 超多， 他， 多， 他， 叫， 啊， 帮， 被问题， 到， 他， 的， 诶， 么， 给， 诶， 有， 错， 还， 天， 够， 也， 努力了， 真的， 好给， 你， 么， 要， 心， 住， 诶， 你， 好， 给， 你， 么， 要， 心， 住， 诶， 你， 好， 给， 小， 到， 了， 么， 我， 给， 小， 就， 别， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 了， 么， 我， 给， 小， 就， 别， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 别， 了， 么， 啥， 着， 别， 了， 么， 点， 红， 狗， 小呢， 你， 这， 叫， 等， 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 等，[256.01]
As he has in mind.
I think we'll need to call you up here.
After the closing discussion.
Uh, talk about you check on that. That call that they will chat though.
Director Ali, thank you for your question. And there's probably two parts to your question. The first is around, um, how do we support the students in their transition? And so they will obviously be, um, transferring to our Wilder facility, which is currently housed by Wellstone. The second part would be what do we do with the actual facility? And as mentioned, um, previously in my announcements, we have been working to develop a process that we are looking to bring back to the board, um, probably in early fall to, to share how we are going to, um, look at not only the tunnel building, but a number of our facilities and evaluate whether or not those are still needed for school, um, uses in the future. And so that will be part of a, um, an opportunity. We'll bring that information back to the board with a finalized process for how we address, um, buildings that are no longer going to be used for educational purposes, the tunnel building being one of them.
Uh, yeah, lead the total building here a little.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
Director Arneson?
Uh, Director Arneson.
Thank you, Chair. I'm coming. I just wanted to acknowledge the long history of the tunnel building. And the total building. Uh, yeah, from the south east come on. It's, um, this building has been closed before. It's been a school before. It's served many different.
They said, don't tell ya, that, that, that all of them. They just told you that they're all of them.
There is a history there and I think that.
And then more than could have done, uh, you know, to her. Uh, you know, probably the top bit more, uh, just don't leave the law.
It's not really, I've never met anybody who hopes to, hopes their house is next to an empty building. That's why I, uh, think it's really important for us to develop a system for our own new buildings. And I appreciate Superintendent Graff, um, discussing that today and that, that, that I appreciate the process that is done in the finance department. And I look forward to, um, bringing that back to Congress late summer, early fall, so that, that, uh, the neighborhood around Toto and neighborhoods around our unused buildings can have.
I'll tell you more time to separate, then they will need to take the chair. And then he changed it, uh, he didn't, uh, well, you're shy, uh, you're, you're, like, though.
Thank you, Director Ali.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Is there any information that you can share with us? What the neighborhood's saying about? Do they have any ideas? Since they are also stakeholders, do they have any ideas or that there are any discussions? What they would like to see this facility to happen?
Thank you, Director Ali, for your question. Uh, I think, uh, again, at this point, what we've been doing is, um, we started this process around the relocation of, uh, heritage, I believe, almost a year and a half ago. And, um, did communicate to.
I'm aware of the heritage and that part I understand that well. What I mean to you is that after the, after the, already the heritage move.
Uh, low heritage.
My question is that. Is there any ongoing discussions about the neighborhood?
Uh, the neighborhood, uh, nah.
And we would like to be aware.
Uh, so, uh, called.
Yeah, I would say, um, Director Arneson has, um, you know, represented this area for some time. And I've kept her in the loop in terms of the, the process that we're engaged in with regarding the school, um, and the discussion about, uh, the, the future of it, the plans of the building itself. Um, I've not had any direct contact with any community members. I know that, um, again, as we've had that conversation, we've been public about the, the process with the, the school closure information, both, um, directly through, um, the website, as well as the publications out to the school community. And, um, you know, again, it's our intent to, to make sure we don't look at this as just one unique building, because we have several buildings for consideration. And so trying to develop what that process would look like for, um, both this one and future ones, um, is what we're attempting to accomplish here with the, bringing that information forward in the fall.
Director Arneson?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. At this, I'd like to speak to that.
Um, they were so tight, uh, you call it.
I have, I have represented, uh, this, this building falls within District One, which is, you all know, is the area that, um, that's where I'm located. So I have spoken to the neighborhood association.
Um, they were in, don't know, Joe, Joe, neighborhood, she thought.
And I won't, um, I, I can't speak to, uh, the extent of their, of who they, um, in the heart of me. But we've, we've, we're very aware that the building is, is that the students are leaving the building.
Uh, they're just, uh, that's a, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that.
This neighborhood, and there's been closures in the past. And, um, so I wanted to be very intentional about making sure that we, you know, that they were aware. And, um, as you, we noted, they did not provide any testimony tonight. And I think that is at least in part because their neighborhood is familiar with this happening.
Um, they're already, uh, neighbor, uh, they're, uh, in Paul's, uh, uh, called, uh, no.
Uh, kind of imagining what, um, what sorts of needs their neighborhood might have and how.
Uh, they were, they, uh, they were, uh, they were, uh, uh, you know, long, uh, you know, but, uh, yeah.
So I'm not going to speak to their, um, like feelings. As I mentioned, it's always, there's always an element of sadness when you see a long, a building with a long history, a school with a long history, leave your neighborhood, but I might also just say that there are, are precious optimism that there is also, um, some unmet needs that could be proposed by that thing. And they are anxiously looking for leadership from our board to complete the process through finance, so that again, we can provide some closure and to this neighborhood and, and let them know.
We can't hear you here. Sorry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I just. And again, thank you for the question. I do not know off the top of my head. However, what I do know is that it will be present. And going by what the previous years have shown, I don't see it anywhere less than the fifty-six million that we've seen a year ago. So it is substantial. And it is a big number, fifty-six million. It is a substantial number. So I do not know. What I do know again is that we will be facing it. And it will be an important number.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chief Diop. I know that I just wanna again highlight, you know, I don't feel like we can pass a budget without mentioning. Um, I don't wanna. I know that, um, you know, we've talked about a lot. We've raised the issue. It's become, uh, in the last few years, it's become more of a present issue. And I know right now there's a, uh, bill at, at the, um, US Congress to, uh, fully fund the IDEA Act. Um, currently, the, you know, the original promise was for forty percent of special education, um, to be funded through the federal government. Currently, they fund about fifteen percent, um, of that. So they're down, you know, um, yeah. They're funding it, I guess, at a level of, what is it? About thirty, you know, about a third of what they said, a little, little more than a third of what they said. They would fund it. So, um, uh, board directors, superintendent graph, I know, um, folks continue to work with the Council of Great City Schools. Um, the, uh, Association of Metro School Districts, the Minnesota School Board Association, all of our organizations. Um, and anyone really who's, uh, invested in public schools really ought to be concerned about this issue. You know, I, we've, we've recently, um, seen some emails, folks talking about special education. Um, advocating for special education students more. And, you know, I think as a, as a public school system and a believer in public schools, um, it, it just represents a, a promise that is not kept by, um, our, our public institutions. So, um, we can say again and again and again, you know, we wanna serve our students. But certainly, our state and federal governments, um, have not been able to do that. So just wanna point that out again. And then, you know, because we then choose to, um, and it's not really a choice, right? But because we fund our special education out of our general education budget, right? There is a cost to our schools in other ways. So just wanna again highlight that. Anybody that's, um, at home, when we pass a budget, that is a huge part of what makes our budget work is because we are able to do that. So, um, uh, thanks, Chief Diop. Um, board members, again, we shouldn't, I don't think we should ever let this issue go. And in the coming years, maybe we'll see some change at the federal government. Hopefully, um, this bill will make progress. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Inz. Uh, Superintendent Graff?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ellison. I just wanna take a moment to highlight the work that our finance team has done. I think you're all aware, the last couple of years, the Government Finance Officers Association has, um, recognized Senior Officer Giop and the finance team for their, and their work. And we're, I'm pleased to announce here again tonight that they were once again awarded the 2019 School Budget Award, um, which is quite a, an honor and distinction, especially, um, the last couple of years where we've seen this happen, um, for this department. Um, do you know that that award is being replaced, um, with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which will be, uh, a new opportunity for the finance team, uh, and the administration to strive for in the future? But wanted to just reinforce some of the comments I heard this evening about the work that our finance team does and, and publicly acknowledge Senior Officer Giop and others. So thank you, Chair Ellison.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, and thank you, board members, for that discussion about the budget. Seeing no more hands. Um, Clarki, will you please call the role on approval of next year's budget?
Director Arneson.
Chair Arneson.
Director Alamin.
Director Alamin.
Yes.
Director Ali.
Director Ali.
Yes.
Director Suriel.
Director Suriel.
Yes.
Director Inz.
Director Inz.
Yes.
Director Jordan.
Director Jordan.
Yes.
Director Caprini.
Director Caprini.
Director Polizzi, yes, Chair Ellison.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the budget is approved. Next is approval of updates to the 2021-2022 capital plan. Director Caprini, will you please move this item?
So moved.
May I have a second with last name for the record?
Second, Suriel.
Thank you. The 2021-22 capital plan update has been moved and seconded. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand to be recognized or let me know. Clarki, will you please call the role on next year's capital plan?
Director Arneson.
Director Arneson.
Director Alamin.
Director Alamin.
Yes.
Director Ali.
Director Ali.
Yes.
Director Suriel.
Director Suriel.
Yes.
Director Inz.
Yes.
Director Jordan.
Director Jordan. Yes.
Director Caprini.
Hi.
Director Polizzi, yes, Chair Ellison.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the item is approved. The next item is approval of the long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. Director Caprini, could you please move this item?
So moved.
May I have a second with last name for the record? Thank you. The update that long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan has been moved and seconded. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands. Clarki, will you please call the role on this item?
Director Arneson.
Director Arneson.
Director Alamin.
Director Alamin.
Yes.
Director Ali.
Director Ali.
Yes.
Director Suriel.
Director Suriel.
Yes.
Director Inz.
Director Inz.
Yes.
Director Jordan.
Director Jordan.
Yes.
Director Caprini.
Hi.
Director Polizzi, yes, Chair Ellison.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the item is approved. The final item from Finance Committee is the Capital Funds Transfer Labelled 2021-0027. Director Caprini, will you please move this item?
So moved.
May I have a second with last name for the record? Thank you. The Capital Funds Transfer Labelled is Resolution 2021-0027 has been moved and seconded. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand or let me know. Seeing no hands. Director Poli, will you please call the role on this item?
Director Arneson.
Director Arneson.
Director Alamin.
Director Alamin.
Yes.
Director Ali.
Director Ali.
Yes.
Director Suriel.
Director Suriel.
Yes.
Director Inz.
Director Inz.
Yes.
Director Jordan.
Director Jordan.
Yes.
Director Caprini.
Director Caprini.
Director Polizzi, yes, Chair Ellison.
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the fund transfer is approved. The next item is approval of the EDIA project for the next school year, which is referred and recommended by the Board's Policy Committee. Director Poli, I'll turn it over to you for this motion.
Thank you, Chair Ellison. I move that the Board directs the administration to conduct a full equity and diversity impact assessment on school fundraising policies and report back findings and recommendations in accordance with our Policy 1304.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to, to conduct an equity and diversity impact assessment on school fundraising policies. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand to be recognized.
Director Caprini.
Very quickly, thank you, Chair Ellison, um, and the Policy Committee. I am incredibly excited about this particular conversation. This has been a hot, hot item for several years. Since my seventeen-year-old was in third grade. And my hope is that through this EDIA, through this discovery of how this policy supports or undermines opportunities for schools, for students that are unable to come to some kind of even medium. I realize that I'm not looking for things being equal but equitable. And what can we do as a district to ensure that the areas that are capable and able to produce and support more opportunities for other students doesn't stop. But we're able to link up areas where I refer to Director Arneson. During a conversation prior to the design of parents. I'm looking really forward to this conversation. And I realize I'm not on the Policy Committee, but I will be attending those conversations. To just listen to the community. And also welcoming the community. Thank you.
Director Caprini. Director Poli, would you like to speak, mark this motion?
Uh, sure. So, thank you, Chair Ellison. The Policy Committee, um, we spent time this spring reviewing our policies as they relate to school and community groups. Um, like, for example, like PTOs or school foundations. And how these efforts intersect with our schools. The superintendent and staff have brought forward the recommendation for EDIA in this topic. And our Policy Committee concurred. Um, so I'll also note that the staff will be conducting an internal EDI review of school site council policy this year as well.
Thank you. Director Arneson?
Director Arneson. I thank you, uh, and thank you, Director Poli. And just one thing, just to add something in the Policy Committee. That is, if there's an opportunity to connect this or act on that. After a day. And just the parent making a private family. And then we're going to make it happen. 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 And then we're going to make it happen.
Thank you.
Uh, seeing no more hands?
Director Polly, will you please call the roll on this item?
Director Arneson?
Director Arneson, Oli.
Director Alameen?
Director Alameen?
Yes.
Oli.
Director Ali?
Yes.
Director Suriya?
Director Suriya?
Yes.
Director Inz?
Director Inz?
Yes.
Director Jordaine?
Director Jordaine?
Yes.
Oli.
Director Caprini?
Director Caprini, Oli.
Director Polly, yes Chair Ellison?
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the item is approved. The next item is a resolution awarding a bond labeled 2021A. Director Caprini, will you please move this item?
So move.
May I have a second with last name for the record?
Second, Arneson.
The capital funds transfer label is a resolution awarding the bond sale 2021A has been moved in seconded. If there's any discussion, please raise your hand to be recognized and let me know.
Seeing no hands?
Clerk Polly, will you please call the roll on this item?
Director Arneson?
Director Arneson?
Director Alameen?
Oli. Director Alameen?
Director Ali?
Director Ali?
Yes. Director Suriya?
Director Suriya?
Yes.
Director Inz?
Director Inz, Oli.
Director Jordaine?
Director Jordaine?
Yes.
Director Caprini?
Director Caprini?
Director Polly, yes Chair Ellison?
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the bond sale is approved. Our next item, under new business, is a resolution condemning gun violence and calling for action by our policymaking colleagues. I will move, I will move approval of this resolution and ask for a second.
Second, Caprini?
Thank you. This resolution has been moved in seconded. As I look for anyone wishing to speak on this item, I will start by using my space here to convey a very basic demand of safety on behalf of our children. They, as young elementary school students, were saying, "Stop killing us. Guns down so we can play. Let us live. Stop killing us. Guns down so we can play. Let us live. Stop killing us. Guns down so we can play. Let us live." I hope we hear their words in our heads over and over and over again until we take every action we can possibly take to end this crisis. Looking for any hands, who else wants to speak on this? Director Caprini?
Thank you Chair Ellison.
Uh, Chair Ellison? I truly appreciate this resolution. It's so incredibly needed. The violence that is happening across this country due to gun violence. And just narrowing it into our city. And then in the pockets of Minneapolis. 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 And then in the pockets of Minneapolis.
I hate feeling afraid just going to the post office or going because I can't keep myself from living. Thank you.
And then I'm sorry.
Thank you Director Caprini.
Uh, Student Rep Deborah Meskell?
Student Rep Deborah Meskell, Deborah Meskell. Uh, I just. Resolution about gun violence. I've kind of. I've come to feel about the norms that like hearing every single week about another school shooting or a mass shooting that have. And that I could, you know, hear screams in the hallways and then suddenly, um, suddenly I knew that I would die or that I would.
And that I could, you know, hear screams in the hallways and then suddenly, um, suddenly
I knew that I would die or that I would.
And then I would. And then I would. And then I would.
With virtual learning and with also a lot of the quarantine that can happen. Only thing I can actually say that have gotten me a little bit better for some students to not. Um, and I just feel like, you know, a thing. Going to change any.
Uh, don't know how to know.
Not going to change things overnight. Because no student should ever have to feel afraid. Or being in a school building.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, uh, uh.
Thank you, seeing no more additional hands?
Uh, Director Ali, thank you. Director Ali, uh.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Uh, Madam Chair.
And I'm supporting this resolution.
And I'm condemning this gun violence to the strongest term. This is. This is unacceptable.
It's really, particularly what's happening now in Minneapolis. Not in Minneapolis and southern Minneapolis, you may say. It's terrorizing our communities. It creates fear and sparing, and sparing no one, including children. And as institution, we are passing this resolution. We want to also make sure that we should not stop there. We have to, in any way, in any shape, that we can be part of this solution, of finding solutions for this crisis. Uh, we have to be part of it. And I wish to see that this has to be, uh, ongoing discussions as we are part of this uh, community. Uh, it is. Uh, I don't know what to describe it. But as I have communications and I'm part of this particularly, uh, black community. We are going through a tough time and, and I wish to see also that a lot of solutions come from the communities, our communities, that how we can make sure our community get peace and harmony that they deserve. It's unacceptable that. There's a gun violence almost every week. Uh, it reaches the.
The point where even people attending the fundraiser are no longer feel safe. We are demanding accountability from every angle, from every branch of the government to be part of the resolution, to be part of this solution.
So thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you Director Ali. Uh, Director Alameen?
Uh, Director Ali, Director Alameen?
Uh, thank you Chair, uh, Ellison.
Uh, Chair Ellison. Again, just kind of echoing what other speakers have said too as well.
Um, I think this resolution is, um, is a scratch on the surface. But I think that we gotta be more, take more action from us personally, from us collectively for us to be present within our community.
Um, this gun violence, it's the age that is happening. Continue to get more and more.
We're talking about our middle schools now, not just our high schools and how it's affecting our community.
And so again, um. I, I support the resolution, but it is a scratch on the surface and we just have
to be more diligent.
We have to be more visible. We have to be more vocal. We have to try to allow those resources to combat what is called in our youth to run to this era. And so as we continue and as we talk about it. Um, I just want to see us not only just talk but show action and provide help in whatever we're able to do to help combat the violence that is taking place within our community. So thank you. Thank you Director Alameen, Director Inz?
Uh, thank you Madam Chair. I just want to say that I, uh, also appreciate the comments of Director Alameen quite a bit, recognizing that, you know, it's one thing for us to pass a resolution, but it's another for us to think about as a school system what we can do to make a difference and how we can educate, provide resources, whatever it is, I think we ought to be thinking about that, um, as a, um, you know, of public good. What is our role? How are we supposed to, in our schools, do something to prevent gun violence as well? So maybe this resolution would be an impetus for that. Thank you.
Uh, uh, uh.
Thank you Director Inz. I think it's like Director Caprini said, we, we know the answer, we just need the political will to, um, to do something about it. So thank you, um, board directors. I renew my motion to approve this resolution and ask for everyone to join in supporting it. Um, Director Polly, can you please call the roll on this resolution?
Uh, uh.
Director Arneson?
Uh, Director Arneson, Oli.
Director Alameen?
Yes.
Oli.
Director Ali?
Yes.
Director Ali, Oli.
Director Suriya?
Director Suriya?
Yes.
Director Inz?
Director Inz?
Yes.
Oli.
Director Jordaine?
Director Jordaine?
Yes.
Director Caprini?
Director Caprini, Oli.
Director Polly, yes Chair Ellison?
Yes, thank you. That motion carries and the resolution is approved. Our final item this evening is time for directors to give a brief update on committees, the chair, or any other board related activities. Directors, please raise your hands or let me know if you want to report anything this evening.
Uh, thank you Chair Ellison. My intention for much of a report on any committee, um, that I'm having is more of just a comment on some of the heartfelt comments that we had tonight during our public. And then we're, 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 and then we're,